The goal of our forum is to help citizens become more informed voters. The candidates for Columbia Heights City Council, I'll list them right now in alphabetical order, and that is Connie Biscans, Laura Dorely, Katie Jacobs, Andy Newton, Scott Skaya, Bobby Williams, and Julianne Wykoff. Those seven candidates have filed for two at-large city council seats. The primary election is August 11th, which will narrow that seven down to four, and those four will compete in the general election on November 3rd. Related to the mayor position, there were only two people who filed for office, so no primary is necessary. Those two people will be on the general election ballot. In lieu of the opening statements today, we will begin with three questions, which were provided to the candidates in advance. This will be followed by questions from the audience, and they were submitted mostly through email because we have no live audience at this time due to COVID. Candidates will rotate, who answers first. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the question. We will end with each candidate presenting a one-minute closing statement. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Julianne Wykoff, and thank you Kathy, and thank you to the League for organizing this tonight. Like you know me, I was born here in Columbia Heights, and I graduated from Columbia Heights High School. I was lucky enough to grow up on what I consider the most beautiful street in the world, Reservoir Boulevard. Baptized and confirmed at First Lutheran Church, where I still am an active member. Last Sunday, I helped to serve over 100 hamburgers at our community drive-through dinner. I've always been active in this community, from cleaning the parks, I serve on my association, now Parkside Village, Meals on Wheels, driving elderly around, et cetera. I'm a very familiar face around Columbia Heights. Very proud that we are celebrating 100 years in 2021, but it's also interesting to note that we were incorporated as a township much earlier, back in 1898. The name Heights, Columbia Heights, was selected because it looked like a place in New York.
I'd like to welcome everybody and thank everyone for tuning in this evening. I'm a 207-year resident of Columbia Heights, charter commission member. I chaired the Complete Council Committee for the 2020 Census, and I'm now a member of the Centennial Celebration Committee, member of Columbia Heights Lions, and a community volunteer. I have almost 30 years' experience in multi-level managerial positions in the printing industry. Retired from the airline in 2016 after almost 17 years, and was the master executive committee chair for 12 of those years with the largest flight attendant union, taking the committee's utilization from 1.5% to 40% prior to my retirement. I currently hold my credentials as a labor assistance professional and as an addiction counselor, which qualifies me to perform Department of Transportation assessments. Being my own business, I have the ability to adapt my schedule to that of the city business and functions as needed. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Andy Newton. Raised by two public school teachers in a small town about this size. I've had a variety of jobs, from summer camp staff to teacher's assistant to stint in corporate America, and now I drive a truck and I do service for a small furniture company, where I've been for almost 10 years. My wife and I bought a house here five years ago, where we live with our seven-year-old daughter, who attends Valleydale Elementary. We're active members of the PTO, we participate in Indian Ed program. I'm also an artist and musician. I'm a member of the neighborhood organization Heights Next. I helped set up the ed staff last year's Pride event, and I'm hoping with this year's virtual Pride also. We've regularly attended and enjoyed many city events such as Jubilee, and for the last five years, I've been one of the admins of the largest Columbia Heights-specific social networking page, the Peaceful Community.
Hello, everyone. First, I would like to again thank the League of Women Voters for setting this up. I would also first like to thank everyone for watching today, and I also want to thank everyone who supported me the last three and a half years. I have lived with my husband, and my husband and I have lived here for approximately 21 years, and I've been recently, for the last five years, been semi-retired, so I've had a lot of time to volunteer in the city. I did a lot of activities with Heights Next, which has been slowed down now with the COVID, but we are working on a very easy social distancing project over in Loma Yaki, it's Blooming Sunshine Edible Garden, that we're setting up for food that people in the community can come pick for free. And I'm also a member of Sister City and the Beautification Committee. I am helping with the flower pots, I help take care of the flower pots of immersion and City Hall.
Hello, my name is Scott Skaya. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters ABC and the City of Columbia Heights for putting this on. My wife Anne and I moved here in 2006, and we work here, we go to church here, and we've raised our family here. Both of our daughters are in the Columbia Heights School District. My oldest, Bella, will be entering 10th grade this fall, and May will be in 8th grade at Columbia Academy. This community has shown me a great appreciation for its cultural diversity here in Columbia Heights. The hard-working nature of its residents and the geographically small footprint makes us very approachable and easy for residents to get involved. In the past, I've volunteered with the recreation department, the annual jamboree, the athletic boosters, the school's sports programs, the food shelf, and I am also on the Centennial Celebration Committee. This experience has allowed me to meet many quality families and individuals here in Columbia Heights. This spring, I walked all 100 miles of the Columbia Heights streets, and this has given me more evidence of the good people trying to make a solid home in a vibrant and diverse community.
Hi, and thank you to everyone for tuning in, and the League of Women Voters in the city for making this possible. So for the last decade, I have dedicated my career to community organizing and advocacy. For three of those years, I directed a statewide environmental organization, where I worked with people across the political spectrum, including farmers, anglers, and students, to name a few. I have successfully passed policies at the local, state, and federal levels of government. As an example, I played an important role in passing 100% renewable electricity resolutions and plans in multiple municipalities. As a policy associate at the City of Minneapolis, I gained a deep understanding for the inner workings and the power and authority of municipal governing. And I would love to take that experience to be your city council member here in Columbia Heights. It's been a priority of mine to build relationships with my neighbors, local businesses, and community groups. I have strong connections with residents who have lived here their entire lives, as well as residents who just moved here a month ago.
Thank you very much, it's nice to be here tonight, and it's a privilege to be able to tell you a little bit about myself. I was born on a small farm north of here, north of Cambridge, about 10 miles, on Highway 65. And I've been, I moved here as a businessman. Didn't move here personally, I lived here until 20 years ago, but I moved here as a businessman back in 1985 on 37th and Central, about that Shell Street at that time. So I've been involved in the city, and we've worked very carefully, and I've been a part of a lot of stuff, this Houston Park, we looked outside here and look at it. I was a part of that. When I first came here, I knew that was a very nice place, and I thought I should buy some landlord here at 37th. And I tried to buy it, but they wanted more money, and I thought it was worth it, and I found out it was all polluted, so I didn't do it. But it's been a privilege to be a part of the city council now for many years, and I think it's a tough time, and I'm glad I'm here today to be, because we're in tough times right now. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. With the exception of any of the incumbents that are running for office in this election cycle, I'm the only candidate citywide that has, for the previous three years, attended and actually been engaged in almost every council meeting. I've been engaged in work sessions, economic development meetings, attended the commission meetings, and also, that includes three years of annual budget meetings. And this year, in 2020, I've also observed and listened to the commission interviews and appointments. That fact, along with my previously stated experience of 30 years of multi-level management, my work in the Association of Flight Attendants, serving 1,500 to 2,000 attendants with life and professional crises and traumas, holding the elected position of a secretary for a state-level hospital board of volunteers, all help to create the foundation that I'll be able to use as a skill set for a council member.
Well, I honestly believe the most important qualification is simply to be a concerned, active member of the community. So in addition to that, I hold a bachelor's degree in Recreation, Parks, and Tourism Administration, which means I have an educational background in assessing the needs of the community, gauging resources required to address those needs, and budgeting, analyzing those programs that are developed. If that sounds like it would transfer good to helping run a city, you're right, it would. So throw in a minor in focusing on group dynamics and contact resolution, and that prepares me to handle the sessions that might happen as smoothly as one would hold. So why am I running for transparency? To bring about a more open and accessible city council. I am running because it's time for some fresh perspectives on what our city is and can be, especially when it comes to listening to the voices of people of color and other minority populations.
Hi, I'm going to start with why I want to seek this office. First off, I want to tell everyone I have enjoyed serving the residents of this city. We have a wonderful city, the people in the city are great, and I would love to, if I could have your vote, to continue serving you for the next four years. I've been a council member now for three and a half years. Prior to that, I was on the Planning Commission for approximately two years, and along with that, I also attended a lot of the meetings and work sessions, EDA, because I found it personally interesting how a city is run, how things are done. I've taken advantage of many educational opportunities while I've been on the council, so I can be a better council member. I've attended all the League of Minnesota Cities conferences, workshops, annual meetings. I also attended the National League of Cities Conference, League of Cities in San Antonio, brought back some wonderful ideas for us, also the Sustainability Conference in Dubuque, Iowa, all to bring back information for our city that hopefully we can use to improve our quality of life. I've also sat on various committees with both the Metro Council and the League of Minnesota Cities, and those committees focused on legislation and for housing, transportation, economic development, and financing. Thank you.
Since 1985, I've been blessed with a fruitful career in the film and video industry. This is an industry that places high value on working closely with multiple people in the creative process. It has taught me the skill of listening to the input of many, to work together on creative solutions, and sometimes that means compromise. I've owned my own production company since 2011, and this added to my skill set, the ability to run a business, to work with budgets, balance ledgers, comply with government policies, and to meet deadlines. I pride myself on high integrity, compassion, and respect for each other. I'm seeking a city council position because I love my community, and I want to see it be even stronger than what it is today. I'd like to see more people get involved with leading our community, and I cannot in good conscience try to convince others to run for city council and lead our community if I don't give it a try myself. Given my ability to be a good listener and a rational problem solver, I've been encouraged by my community to seek this position.
Great. So my experience in municipal government, community organizing, and my background in policy and management, both educational and professional, I have a degree in policy and management from the University of Minnesota, more than prepare me to be an effective, community-centered city council member. I know that with your support, I am ready to step into this job and collaborate with you to build a strong Columbia Heights for all of us. I want to be your council member because I care deeply about our city. I believe in our collective innovation and creativity to ensure that each and every person and local business is welcome, safe, and thriving. 60% of our population has turned over in recent years. We have many new young people like myself, families and immigrants joining our community. They must have a voice in our city government. As your council member, I will come to you, I will take the initiative to engage and include you. It is really important to me to not wait until you come to me with agreements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was going to retire, however, the tough times, and the tough times we have here in America, and in our city, in our state, I really believe there's time that I come back again, because my whole life has been serving people. In business life, I've been in business my whole life, as a farm boy even since then, serving people, because our company's number-one goal is serving people, the most important part of our company. And I try and make that with all our people, we have many employees, and I think that we've done a lot of things that I've been involved with here in the city so far. Remember when it first ran, that this was kind of a junkyard out there. Now, Houston Park, I'm looking out the window here, and it's beautiful. These condos that we built, it was all polluted before we spent millions of dollars, we got money from the state. And we thank that for that, and I think we can do a lot of things more, because these are tough times right now. Thank you very much.
First, thank you again. I have a dual degree in political science and journalism from Leuk College in New York City. I don't want to brag about that, but man, you have to work and deal with a lot of different people in New York City, and I loved it. And I also have 28 years as a flight attendant. Last Thursday, I clicked on to take the early retirement package. I cried, I cried so hard. But you meet so many people that you have to work with on those airlines, and it can be tough. So why? I've been here before, sitting up here, and I never got to finish what I started. I created a 501(c)(3) nonprofit called Columbia Heights Historical Society, and we did very well. We had many people and businesses sign up. However, a council member made it very difficult for me, so I turned it over to the Anoka County Historical Society. I organized the First Taste of Columbia Heights, it's still going, guys. I chose to come back to Heights after all my years away.
Okay, I'm trying to get through all this. Short term, day one, I want to establish some sort of regularly scheduled focus groups, allowing full participation by the public in important conversations. It's not happening right now, it needs to happen. Next, beginning working on restarting Columbia Heights Arts Commission. Yes, we have one, it's just been mothballed since 2015, that's not right. Next, soccer field. We have a dozen baseball fields in town, zero soccer fields, let's get that done. Dog parks, we don't have one, let's get one. Long term, set some goals for safer, more walkable streets for our kids, our elders, those with special needs. We need to build more sidewalks, let's get started on that. Central Avenue, let's keep working to make Central Avenue a business. People want to be, a place consumers want to frequent. Next, reassess, rethink some of our outdated ordinances. When our parking ban needs to be reevaluated, we need something more reasonable, more variable. Yards, stop leveling fines and issuing corrective orders on residents who are just trying to establish more environmentally responsible, meaningful, diverse, and beautiful ecosystems on their own properties.
Hello again. The first thing as a completionist, has been on the council, the biggest thing is the completion of our new City Hall in the very first luxury apartments in our city. That'll be a huge development, and we're hoping it's a tipping point to help start new development in our downtown. Second, continue support of our facade brand program, it's done a great job in helping small businesses along Central and 40th. Third, strengthen our sustainability by focusing again on our infrastructure, making sure that our water lines, sewer lines, storm front lines are all working, and our traffic and our streets are doing well. Long term, I want to increase our community placing. We have a great program that's been around for 11 years, I'd like to make that stronger. I would like to continue cleaning up Central Avenue. We've had a great start, but we have a lot of work to do, and also focus on redevelopment of Central Avenue, and finally, improve our parks. We need to start a conversation with our residents and how they want to pay for park upgrades. Thank you.
Arts and culture attracts people to communities. It makes us feel good about where we live, and it makes us want to stay there. It creates emotional infrastructure for people raising their families, spending their time, and spending their resources. Our short-term goal would be to promote arts and culture here in Columbia Heights, to get more art in public places, to get more of our local artists to lead classes, and to look into creating a weekly music in a park event. One of my goals is also to limit public office to two terms. During this, we'll make way for others to step up, shape our community of Columbia Heights. Columbia Heights is in constant state of change and forward movement, but we can honor the past while still looking to the future to include all residents. Long term would be to increase cross-cultural community engagement, also to increase diversity in Columbia Heights leadership. I would like to see all people of our community feel comfortable in stepping up, offering their ideas, and being a part of this leadership.
So over my time living in this area, and throughout my campaign so far for city council, I've had the chance to listen to hundreds of residents about their needs and vision for our community. My priorities are and will continue to be shaped by these conversations. Some of my top priorities include making sure that quality, affordable housing is available for current and future residents. So in the short term, that would include things like ensuring that rental properties are well-maintained, there's opportunities for property owners to make critical upgrades for their properties, and also access for low- and middle-income neighbors in our community, particularly communities of color, to own properties of their own. Also ensuring our local small businesses are able to succeed, and that we are a sought-after place for new businesses to come. My fellow candidates have mentioned Central Avenue. I think there's a lot of exciting opportunity for improvement there.
Thank you again very much. Number one, I think is right now is our police and fire departments a short-term goal, because across the country, and even in small cities, they're in trouble. And as a matter of fact, we just saw last night, two policemen get shot in their face, killed in Texas. And they're just going to a development disturbance program. And that's really a short-term goal for our infrastructure, short. Police and fire are so important to us, and the drug issue in Columbia Heights is not worried and happy to be acknowledged. It's terrible. Our police are doing a great job of apprehending these people, but it's happening every day. Every week, I get a green sheet through the council, and someone's died from overdose of drugs. Just this past week, another one did. But that's a short-term goal, but long-term goals, we've got to see this. Our short-term goal too is to see our 40th and Central New City Hall be built. And that's a big thing, we've committed to that, it's got to be done. The last one is immersion hall needs remodeling.
Heights is changing, and we need to prepare ourselves for it. Now, I love the old Columbia Heights. Families were always interconnected. I remember shopping at Cassler's, and I remember getting ballet shoes as a little girl from Check Shoes at 40th and Central. But I also love the new Heights that's coming in, the young people and the minorities moving in. I want them to succeed. I'd like to help businesses like Amos &amp; Amis, who are known throughout the cities with great barbecue. They're based here in Columbia Heights, let's help them to become more prominent. I want to see people of color up here on this podium. It's about time. I will look for them, and I will be a bridge between the old Columbia Heights and the new Columbia Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to encourage owner-occupied housing as part of our path forward. Right now, our rentals are about 44% currently of all the total addresses that are in Columbia Heights. We need to look at the Central Avenue facade improvement program, make sure that that continues. We're two years in, it's growing every year. The City Hall being on 40th and Central, I believe is going to perpetuate improvements along that Lower Central Avenue corridor, which is something we're all looking for. Immersion updates, and also updating the ordinances for Columbia Heights. Taking a look, it's going to be a long, lengthy process, but looking at that process, updating what needs to be updated, discard what needs to be discarding, and focus on consistent ordinance compliance. Thank you.
I would first recommend reading the Bootstrap, I believe it's Bootstrap, this book that was written years ago about the history of Columbia Heights. I attended a seminar that the Anoka County Historical Society gave us at the library, and it was quite a lively and colorful pass that we've had here. And also stress that we've had people here for generations, and they're still here, and they love being here, and I would love to invite them, and hope that they would be proud to raise their family here for generations to come, so.
Well, I'll just dovetail on what Connie just brought up. I've also been reading the Bootstrap book and working on a documentary film about that book, and saw a lot of it's fresh in my memory. There's some outstanding things that have happened here. And you know, one of the biggest things that I see is that hard work ethic that we see here today in Columbia Heights. That's been here from day one. You know, people digging their own basements out to build their homes, living in the basements before they build the homes on top of that. I mean, how much more hardworking can you get? And I think that just laid a foundation for a great path for the City of Columbia Heights and a distinction in the metro area for being a hard-working, good-family community.
Thank you. So I think one of the best ways to get to know a community's history is through the people that are here, and I have really loved getting to know my neighbors and local business owners and community groups, and it's, you know, just taught me a lot of the rich history that Connie and Scott have alluded to, just that I think Columbia Heights is representative of what makes not only the state, but the country beautiful. We have been historically a community of immigrants, a working-class community. I am excited to read the Bootstrap book, and I appreciate the recommendation. I am a newer resident than some of my fellow candidates, and you know, I'm still learning every day. And I think the Anoka County Historical Society is a great place to turn, as well as other local universities and other local places. So thanks.
I think one of the best things that I learned when I got here early was our Sister City, this was a police community when I first got here, as I understood it as much as it was. But I got to go to Loma Yaki home, and what an eye-opener that was. We went with a whole group of us, regular from the Sister Cities group. And I went to Auschwitz, that was a terrible sight to see, and what they did to the Jewish people back then. Got to go to the salt mine, and we got to have transition. We got the police to come here, and we got exchange students. It was really fun, because that's one of the most exciting things I've seen for our city worldwide. And that's a big thing, because what we see in the world today is a different world than it was 20 years ago. And I just really think that was a tremendous part of history of Columbia Heights.
Well, you know that we are one of the highest cities in the Twin Cities area, and we have a water filtration plant up at the top of Reservoir Boulevard, and the water there can flow down all the way down to the airport. We started out as big farmers, a lot of us, but we sure have grown. I like to always talk about the founder, creator of Matronic, the two of them. They are from here in Columbia Heights, Earl Bachan, and I forget the other guy, he goes to my church also. He went to my church. And also Pat Proff, the screenwriter, he mentions Columbia Heights in so many of his movies, like Naked Gun and Police Academy. And unless you're from Columbia Heights, you're not always going to get the joke. So this is just the best town in the world for me. Thank you.
I've had the pleasure of attending some of the presentations over at the library with our older citizens that have shared the history of Columbia Heights and lived a lot of those historical moments. And I would recommend when those pieces do come up, that the residents take the time to be involved in that. It's very entertaining, as well as very educational. Some of the things that I loved hearing about was the streetcars and the train, and how the kids would jump on the, and I'm probably going to get it in the wrong order, but they would jump on the streetcar to get up to the train, because they didn't want to walk the two blocks, a typical approach to life for a young person with great legs underneath them. But there's just so much texture to this city, and it continues to grow. That texture and that history continue to develop with every year that passes. So I'm excited to be a part of the modern history in Columbia Heights. And being on the Centennial Committee gives us a great look into what we're doing for the Centennial Celebration and what we've seen happen across the decades. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's really fun, it's really interesting to look into our history going way back, where we came from, where we've been. I know where I live used to be a golf course. I've been trying to find out exactly where all the holes were, just for fun. The neighborhood thought, we thought it might be fun to find all the hole flags or something. I do know the house at the very end of our block had been the clubhouse. There's even some arguing about that. I'd like to know what that bridge is out there, we've all been talking about it. It's just the bridge in the middle of the grass in the park, I don't know. Anyway, more important to me is the recent history. I want to look at where we've been the last few years. We've developed such amazing, vibrant communities. The Somali community is huge, it's rich here, talk about texture. The LBGTQ community, they just had their first pride last year, it's a big deal. There's a lot going on right now in the last few years, and that's what I'm going to focus on, that's what I'm going to explore.
I think along the same lines with arts and culture, city parks are very valuable. They're valuable to all the families here and individuals who like to get out. Especially in the recent months, we've seen a large influx of people getting out and exercising, and being one with nature. We certainly do support updating our parks, I've seen many of them that need a little extra help. We have quite a few that are in good condition. We have quite a few that are in good shape, that are very nice, but I could see room for improvement on a lot of them. So I do support updating the park system here. I'm going to be the first to tell you that I do not know all of the ins and outs of guiding the city. But another thing that I will tell you is that I think that's why you have a forum of people sitting on city councils, so everybody can bring their expertise to the table and find a solution that makes everybody happy.
In short, I definitely support park improvements. On Sunday, I was in Housid Park talking to neighbors over there and that's been one of the things that I hear most consistently is people are yearning for more opportunities in our parks and improvements. I support more infrastructure for recreation for children and for dogs. And we do have many beautiful parks in the city and, you know, I want to thank the current council members that are here tonight and the ones that came before for, you know, making our parks beautiful. But I think we have a lot more to do, especially as we have a growing city. And that's one of the things I mentioned, that one of my priorities is quality affordable housing. I think in coming years, we are going to need to develop a lot of additional housing. I would love to see more mixed-use development on Central Avenue. And the more we do this, the more we'll have tax income to spend on things like parks. Thank you.
Thank you again. Great question. I'm glad you asked it. But we have a youth foundation through our company and we have the privilege of providing playgrounds for this park right here, Housid Park, many years ago. It was one of the first things, one of the parts we did, we have several of them now that we've got around the city. It has been a privilege. And, you know, six million is a scare number in a sense, but we got the land, we have the mostly equipment, we get some modern equipment now. The schools just did that, they're changing their parks. But my granddaughter, she loved the Compton Pressman Park. I lived there, two blocks from there, and she learned that was her park place and she loved to play it up and down the hills and with the equipment and the different things she gets going on. Just a great thing. So we should constantly be improving parks and we do that. We've been doing it all the time there in the council and thank you very much for that question.
Of course, I support park improvements. I've already been to the council a few years ago when I was just an ordinary citizen and asked them to consider a smoking ban in our parks because I've had such a problem up in my own neighborhood of Sullivan Park where Matronic employees cannot smoke anywhere on Matronic property, but they can walk into Sullivan Park and smoke and drop their cigarette butts and kids and families have to walk through that. That's unacceptable to me. I would like to get neighborhoods involved in their neighborhood parks and see what they would like to see in these parks. Yes, we'll have to dig out some city money from somewhere. I hope we could do some fundraisers for different parks, but I think we can do it and I'd like to see the parks become more green, less fertilization, less chemicals and more self-run. Thank you.
I'm definitely a proponent of our parks and we do have, especially for a community the size of Columbia Heights, where less than four square miles, 20,000 people approximately, we have one of the more comprehensive park systems in the metro area. And I'm very thankful to the cordyacs who began that process for us. I think that we need to be physically responsible in how we improve our parks and how we maintain them, what we add to them. In terms of what's available for parks, I would not be in favor of a dog park in Columbia Heights. Too many cities who have them are dismantling them because of the liability and the cost for those parks. But I think if we're conscientious about how we do it and we make sure that we're in tune to the impact of what COVID has done to budgets, I think that we can do a lot of those things that the community would like.
Hi, okay, well, I'm a Parks Rec guy, so this is what I like. Yes, my wife and I are lucky enough to live next to Cordyac Park, which is just, it's an amazing park. It's got a little bit of everything. I think a lot of our parks are giant lawns and we could probably do better, like Julian was saying, we could probably get a little away from some of the chemicals, get into more, some more natural plantings and stuff. Not to say that we don't keep fields. Like I said, we want a big soccer field, I like a few big soccer fields, but we could vary the land a little bit, make it a little more shaded, a little more pretty. Paying for the stuff, you find the money, you find a way to do it. Little fees on a water bill, you know, we all pinch at a buck a month. You don't miss that much. And on top of that, on top of just the parks, we need programs, especially for teens. There's not enough for that, we need some more of that.
Yes, I do support improvements for our parks. The number one thing that came up on the survey for a comprehensive plan a couple of years ago was we love our parks. Unfortunately, right now, the only money that we have set aside in our budget for parks is now it's probably $50,000 a year that's used for repairs. All the money that comes from the upgrades that we did with the splash pad, with Keys Park, Housid Park come from redevelopment projects like the senior affordable hall theme, the flats just went up and now hopefully Alatus when it's done. If those projects stop, we have zero money for upgrading our parks. I would like, in the next four years, if you vote for me, I would like to start a conversation with residents and council and explore other options for money, whether it be a dollar fee on our water bill every month, other options, possibly bonding. There are other options out there. Or do we want to keep it as is, where we wait for the next large project that gives us a half a million to improve our parks? Thank you.
I love this question. As I talked about earlier, I have dedicated my career to environmental advocacy and there are so many things that we can do as a city. I mentioned one of them, I think making it a priority as a city to invest in clean renewable electricity. And additionally, in our city fleet of vehicles as well, I'd love to see that move to electric. When I look around the city, I see so many young kids and we need to do a lot of these things so that the city can be a bright, vibrant community for them as well. One thing that I didn't mention earlier is making sure that our streets and our parks are safe. I look around my neighborhood and there's a lack of streetlights and not consistent sidewalks and I want to make sure that our streets are multimodal because we need to be reducing car trips. So that's something important as well.
Well, I'm not sure that, I know climate has changed since the beginning of mankind, I believe, but as far as how it's changing, there's not really a real conjunction of what's going on. It's warmer in some places and colder in others, but I'm not a big climate changer, but it is, there is changes, we know that. But the thing is, what's causing that? I think that there's all kinds of reasons that there's climate change and I think God controls the home. I really believe in that. Because this birth and this creation we have was created by God and He is in charge of that and I don't know the answers to that. However, there are plenty of people that think they know the answer, but I don't have one of those answers.
Yeah, this is a big deal of mine and I am so proud of Heights, the way we have, the way we can compost. I hardly have any garbage when I have to put out my garbage. It's mostly cat poop. That's all I really have in my garbage these days. Columbia Heights is also a tree city and we won awards for our beautiful trees. We should plant more of them. That helps with the climate almost more than anything to clean the air. Look at some credits for solar power and I hope that the new city hall and the apartments will be more green also. I'd like to see more accessible chargers for electric cars. There's a lot of things that can be done and they are very important, making our pavement more permeable so that the water runoff is better too. Let's do it, okay?
I see climate change for Columbia Heights being attached also to our sustainability. And according to the Board of Sustainable Development of the U.S. National Academy of Science, it's defined as the ability to bring the balance to the major categories of nature, environment and life support systems in order to protect the community. And I really see those two being hand in hand. We have a forester that the city has hired just recently who is very knowledgeable. We have a terrific tree program. They are addressing trees that are diseased and they have put in a rock garden to get the root balls of the trees that will be planted in the city to develop more quickly and in a more healthy manner. It goes back to our park systems as well. We also have the Alatus Project on 40th, which is incorporating quite a few green items into that development. So we're moving in that direction.
Okay, so I think the biggest thing that we can do as a city is to make sure that people here have the tools they need to make better environmental choices. So get our website, get it going, get it bigger, get it more organized, have a whole resource where people can find out more about recycling, more about composting. Minneapolis has a free tree program. You can pick up two trees a year. We could probably find something out how to do that in our city. We can get more bike lanes. The website could also have, you know, if I want to go solar, how do I do it in the city? You could say, well, here are your resources. Go to these websites, go to these companies, they offer rebates, et cetera. That's it. And like Julian was saying, charging stations would be great, let's improve runoff, especially in Central Avenue. There's a lot of concrete and not a lot of space between plates of concrete sometimes. Let's get that water getting through the soil and getting clean towards the lakes.
This is one of my hot topics. I've already written almost a whole page, so I'll say it in one minute if I remember. One thing that's really important for people to realize in San Antonio, now I'm at the National League of Cities, Moody, I think it's Moody or it's not Moody, but anyway, the investors that rate cities for their bonding have stated that they are now requiring all cities to have a climate change action plan in order for them to get rated. So this is very important for our city to keep our rating that we have, which is very good. We are also part of the members of the Green Step City. I would love to push for level three. When I was on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan, I pushed and pushed and pushed. Cora Elizabeth had piles of emails of information I was finding from all over, of things I wanted to incorporate in our comprehensive plan that we could meet and make this city more sustainable and more resilient. And I do believe in climate change as well. Just so you know, we have solar panels on four of our buildings. We signed up for subscription and hopefully we start working in the next year. Public Works plays a crucial role in sustainability and resilience, making sure our roads and our heights and everything is in working order. Thank you. That's just a start.
Well, I'm so glad I get to follow Connie. I don't know where I'd go from there. You know, there's a lot of things that we've hit on here that recently that I think kind of fold right into this, you know? More natural landscape, less open fields, with the exception of a couple soccer fields. One of my main clients is Exile Energy and I work on quite a few of their programs with renewables in regards to solar, wind and hydro. And, you know, just helping them or having them assist us in rolling out some of these programs locally here and talking to new businesses and existing businesses about how we can help them implement solar panels on the roofs and just look at business practices and how they can be greener themselves. Anybody who knows me knows that bicycling is a big part of my life. Every morning I get out and I do 10 miles locally here and I see it firsthand where it can be difficult to move around if you don't have a car. So I commend what's going on on 37th Avenue now. That's been big talk in the bicycle community for the last couple of years and I would like to see more of that happen.
Very much. It was a great question. I am a type of guy that I believe that we just set a goal, like we did with our previous city manager and he had a five-year goal plan and it was like 5%, not over 5%. This last year, because we had a new policeman, so we increased our budget by 10%. And I thought that was too high because people get shocked with the prices of taxes. And I think it's very critical that we have a goal, a long-term goal for taxes, how much could we increase it? And I like that 5% should be a maximum, really, because it's a lot. Because you take 10 years and 50% at 5% a year. It's a big thing and taxes are constant and we're asking more for people yet, and at the same time, we don't have enough money to do everything they want to do. It's a really difficult question.
Yeah, that is a tough one. I just got my tax statement from, well, from my mortgager and next year, my mortgage will go up almost $30 and that's the tax part of it. The taxes will raise it up $30 a month. That hurts. We have to be mindful of taxes. We also need to improve the city. We have to find out the fine balance. We have to compromise. Sometimes we have to say no, we have to do what's right for the city. Well, let each department come forward with what they would like to see in the next year. We'll look to see what Heights is really lacking. One thing we are lacking, but it's maybe superficial, is good public relations, a good marketing company. Let's do that, but let's be very mindful. That $30 a month next year is completely upset the budget that I've had set up. Thank you.
Even with COVID's effect, we're one of the luckier communities around the metro area that we're still financially pretty sound. However, that does not mean that we can be, that we don't need to maintain being cautious in funding dollars as those dollars from the state and the federal government become more stretched. The long-term effects of COVID, I don't think have begun to reach us yet. We have to be very cautious. We can't continue bonding. We're going to have to learn to live within our budget. We've got older, long-term residents who are being taxed out of their homes because the taxes keep increasing and this is why it is absolutely critical that we address bringing businesses into Columbia Heights. It's difficult. We can't pull in a big Matronic. We're less than four square miles. We have limited property available. But it is absolutely critical that we bring those businesses in to help offset the burden on the residents.
Well, the next year or so, things are gonna, they're gonna get worse before they get better. I think we all know that with COVID, with, like KT was saying, we're not through this yet. Things are going to get, like I said, they're going to get worse before we get better and we may need to tighten our belts for, you know, a year or two until the economy can get rolling again. And it will get rolling again. So we may need to be careful as far as raising any taxes. We need to be well-aware of the fact that businesses are being hurt pretty bad right now. A lot of them, some of them are going to make it through this. So I think we've got to be very mindful of how much we're going to stretch our residents and our businesses for now, for now.
Well, the first time I've asked since with COVID, I was curious to know what they're looking at for budget. She said the first, this coming year should be, we should be okay, but again, because of the unknowns, the next year's could be pretty tight. We already have a skeleton staff that we've added very little to since 2003 when they cut LGA. We've gotten LGA back and there's another fund I can't think of right offhand that we do get monies from other pots that help us. But again, you ask for one police officer, that's 1% increase. You ask for other things and also we have to pay union pay raises and all that stuff and insurance. So, right, some of the things I've asked for in our last full city session, which was two weeks ago, don't cost us anything. But again, we have to look at and prioritize with the council what things we really think we need, see if there's alternative fundings. Our staff really works hard to get grant money and stuff, but again, it's always a juggling act. If people want these things, but then the cost, so it's like, what do we do? And we just, and staff does a really good job of cutting it themselves before they even come before the council to get the budget approved. So it's a tough balancing act.
I spoke earlier about attracting new people to Columbia Heights. I also believe that we need to attract some new business here and I think that would help a lot of things with the budget scenario. You know, Andy hit on a lot of good points right here. So did Julian about increasing our image. We've got a good, strong image here, but in order to attract new business, I think we're going to have to spend a little bit of money on PR. But, you know, with anything else, you know, you're gonna have a group of people here and we're gonna work on a good creative decision as a group and come up with a solution.
Yeah, thank you. So like a lot of folks have mentioned, we are in a very tough time right now, being still in the middle of a global pandemic that has had a lot of impacts both on our public health in the community and the local economy. Both KT and Scott mentioned bringing in new businesses to the community. I think that's really important. I see a lot of open space. I see a lot of open space and opportunity when I look at the Central Avenue corridor, and that's, you know, opportunity that we're currently missing to bring in revenue from businesses. And also, like Scott mentioned, I also agree that it's important to bring in new residential development as well. We have a lot of, we have a lot of new neighbors in this community in recent years, and, you know, we're just gonna keep growing. So I would want to talk to the city manager about, you know, getting creative about what are potential sources of funding from, and looking at partnerships with other governments as well, other levels of government.
Yeah, this is a tough one. We don't even have a grocery store, and I know that's been on and off, but we need basic services here in Columbia Heights. A lot of days I would never even leave Columbia Heights, except that last week I had to get a necklace fixed, and I had to go to St. Anthony to do a jewelry repair. There's no dry cleaner in Columbia Heights. I think that we do have a population to support that, and we need to get those people in. We need to just go and ask them to say, hey, let's take in account of open spaces that we have here in Heights and also empty buildings, and see what would fit in those spaces that we need, and then go out and seek the people that can fill up that space, right? It is tough, and I would also like to buy some clothes here in Columbia Heights and not have to go someplace else. We do have the population. We can do it.
One of my passions is the lower Central Avenue corridor, and we've all touched on it in different topic areas, but tagging into what Julie is saying, I would like to see the type of retail businesses along that, that lower corridor of Central. We have wide sidewalks there. It is a very pedestrian-friendly area if we utilize the businesses, bring in businesses that can draw that pedestrian traffic. We have a parking facility, both a parking lot and a parking ramp, just a half a block off 40th and Central, that make that a good opportunity for those businesses. We also have property that the city has been picking up over on the university with the hopes of putting some type of a industrial, a light industrial park over there. I want to see that developed to bring more business in. I think that, I agree with Julie, we've got the, we've got the population to support it. We just need to be creative in how we do it.
Well, this comes back to the arts again. I, it do create a space that people want to come to, to have experience, to see things, to do things. If you create a space where there are people, the businesses will follow them. They want their business. They want to go where the people are. So, and that's why I want to, day one, get the Arts Commission back online, get it, get it going. Let's get some murals, let's get some sculptures, let's get some art festivals. I'm actually starting, I'm part of a group that's starting to plan for an art festival next summer here in Columbia Heights. We're hopefully gonna do it next summer if all this stuff blows over. Art doesn't have to be expensive. There's funding all over the place for art. There's grants everywhere. We can get art here, and if you make a place beautiful, people will come and the businesses will follow.
Arts do improve the economy in there. They improved on St. Paul when they built those locks for artists, so that is very important. The other thing is that buildings that bring in taxes, businesses, unless they're building a building, don't pay taxes because we don't have a sales tax in our city right now. So it's important for us to look at redevelopment. That's where we're hoping with these luxury apartments, that is the tipping point for redevelopment of the strip mall area, the area in the southern part of Central Avenue further up. And I know, I do not know what's happening with Hy-Vee. It's been silent for a while, folks out there. I know they're wondering out there, I wish that they could ask it, but right now it's a standstill. I'm sorry, it's still a standstill. There's other places like redeveloping the southwest corridor at 40th and University. I believe we just got the funding to clean up the contamination, there's serious contamination there, but that's another area. The corner over about 37th and Stinson could easily do with some redevelopment in that area. I think it's really important. We only have 9% of our property in this city is commercial. We need to use whatever we can to build what we can to help shifts, to help residents share the burden of taxes in our city. Thank you.
Well, Connie hit on something kind of interesting, that's something I would like to explore a little bit more on, is the lack of sales tax here. My business pays, you know, we charge and pay sales tax, you know, for that money and for my clients in Minneapolis and St. Paul. So I would take a look at that. You know, Columbia Heights has got a lot of great things going on. Of course, there's room for improvement, and of course, if we did that, it would attract people and it would attract businesses. The fast food alley that we see on the north side of Central, that's always been a little sticking point for me. I think we can do better than that. You know, the, I'm glad that recently there's been a cap on automotive. I realize that's part of our city's history as well, but I think there's better creative industries that can come along on Central Avenue. 40th has been a big thing for me too as well. I can see that whole area from Central to University turn into something much better than what it is.
So I agree with a number of my fellow candidates about, as we talked about previously, bringing in more business is critically important, particularly businesses that are owned locally here in our community. Connie, you mentioned the site that's owned by Hy-Vee. I live really close to that site, and it has frustrated me since I've lived here, and I know, you know, many of my neighbors, someone brought it up to me on Sunday night when I was in Houston Park. So today I talked with Erin at the city's planning department because I wanted to have a sense of like what the latest is on it and what conversations were in the works. And it's so disappointing to hear that there has not been movement. And I want to think about creative ways that we can push Hy-Vee and other potential partners. I would love to see a mixed-use development in that space and other areas of Central. That's an important transit corridor, and I think, you know, bringing more diverse residents along that corridor to live will also help bring more business.
Well, the bottom line is, we do need to get more businesses, and that's something we've been working on now for 20 years. You've got Sarnes over here many years ago. That was a couple of old junk stations and a couple of old houses during my time here. That's a big restaurant, it's a good restaurant, but now they're shut down. But tax, tax and businesses, and sales taxes, it goes back to businesses. So we should really attract business coming here without a sales tax, but with a sale of taxes, probably less attractive, but we do, I agree with Julie and everyone else in K, that it's important to have, have businesses, because business is a big part of the business in your city.
I'm very much aware of having had conversations for the last three years with residents who are faced with the dilemma of maintaining their homes, maintaining a reasonable lifestyle under, under constraints. We need to, we need to avoid bonding. People cannot afford another referendum slapped onto their tax bills. It's, it's forcing people to leave the community, people who've been dedicated to the community for decades. We need to be fiscally responsible. We need to find ways to access grant money. We need to find ways to access federal dollars to make sure that we live within our budget. And it's going to be a struggle, and I think, maybe I'm more pessimistic than the rest of you, but I think it's gonna be longer than two years when we look at the total effects of COVID.
Well, taxes are never affordable for anyone. It's just something we all have to deal with. And like I said before, we may need to just tighten our belts and keep things level for a while until the economy can kick back up. I don't have a good answer right now. I'll be honest. I, I would defer to two experts. I would probably sit down and have some long talks with some economists and say, where are we at? What do we do? I'm not, I'm not too proud to say that there's some things I don't know enough about yet, and I look forward to learning more about them, so.
Thank you.
Kind of put together a committee.
Taxes are always a tough thing. We try very, very hard to balance and keep that in mind, because people are, their fixed incomes in our city. One, one thing that we don't have control over that are causing part of our taxes to go up are the housing prices in Columbia Heights. I look at, I have access, my mother's an agent, so sometimes she lets me look at her MLS. And the average price, a lot of the houses started between 200 and 250, it used to be 100 and 150. So when the price of your house goes up, your taxes go up. We don't have any control over that. However, we do have control over the budget. The largest part of our budget is public safety and public works. And I would love to get input of people, what things they want cut from public safety and public works, because that's the largest part of our budget. We're already bone, again, like I said, the skeleton crew that we've had, we pretty much have maintained since 2003, so it's really tough. We try, this coming, in a couple of years, we may not add anything just to keep things tight, but it is really tough. And sometimes bonding is needed. We do have a really good rating, and if we can afford it, we should look at that because there are projects that can't be done without it.
I would take a look at, trying to find ways to, trying to have some sort of sliding scale on taxes. I understand, I've got a 93-year-old mother that's definitely on fixed income, and I totally get that side of things. But we have quite a few families that have moved here to save some money on their property taxes, and we gotta take a look at that too, and take a look at the property taxes versus income, and have some serious discussions about that. One thing during this whole COVID crisis that I've learned is that it's, it's taught us to, that we can live a simpler way of life and still have it be equally as rewarding. For me personally, there's definitely been a lot less meals out, there's been a lot, you know, there's been a lot of cutbacks that we've made in our home, and I, I think that life can still be equally rewarding even with cutbacks.
Yeah, thank you. So this issue of making sure that our community can afford to live here and afford taxes is not just an issue of economic justice, it's also an issue of racial justice. One thing that is really critically important to me is having our city council be more representative of the community. So I'll say, I am a low-income person myself. I know what it is like to live paycheck to paycheck, and, you know, whether or not I'm gonna have enough, you know, money to make my mortgage payments and sort through bills. I'm also someone with a disability, and, you know, I know that a lot of my neighbors in this community are in a similar boat. And so one thing I think, that I think about is not only, you know, making sure that people can afford to live here and afford taxes, I want to make sure we are doing what we can as a city to make sure that people are earning living wages. So that's something I want to work on as well.
I don't have the answer, but I'll tell you one thing, hard work works. And sometimes people have to work, I used to work two or three jobs when I was younger. So sometimes you have to work more jobs to make it go. And there's always bargains out there too. And, you know, I used to be a coupon clipper, and sometimes you get stuff half-price. I have some friends that go to these second-hand stores, and they said, they can buy clothes that were tanks on them, that were a third or a fourth, but they were just retail. And that's, that's, you learn, when you really need it, you need to decide what you want to buy. We have people come in and buy a pack of cigarettes, you know, I don't smoke, but we have to have cigarettes, but people love them. But they, a cigarette costs, a pack of cigarettes costs $10 almost now. It's crazy when they get money and spend on cigarettes. So, you know, you gotta look at your lifestyle and the food you eat and everything else.
Yes, this is tough. The ghost of Bruce Muraki has come to us. This is what he used to preach. I miss that man very much, and I learned a lot from him. He was always concerned about the underdogs here in our city. We need to protect them, not just hit them with taxes. Let's take care of them. As I've said myself, my townhome that I bought in 2011, I got it for $160. One next door to me just sold for $250, for $250,000, the exact unit. We can't help what Anoka County is charging us for these, but locally, hopefully we can do something about the taxes and help the residents stay in their homes, because that's cheaper than sending them off somewhere. But we need to protect them and help them, and let's make the budget meetings more transparent and online and ask for help.
Well, like I said in my opening, among my goals, I think the first thing that we need to do is we need to establish a more safe and open forum for people of color in town. I've talked to a lot of, a lot of people of color in town, and one of the things that they say is, they come to the meetings and they don't feel present, they don't feel recognized. I mean, even if they get to say something, they still don't feel like their voices are being heard. We're hearing them, but we're not listening to them, and we can do better. I've said before, I'm not, I'm not running to be anyone's voice. I am running to hear their voices. I'm running to be a listener. I am running to, to make the change they're asking us to make.
Promoting diversity inclusion in Columbia Heights. One, our public safety, our police departments work really hard to have police offices that reflect the people in our community. It's very tough. So what they do, and they have several programs that other cities are using it too, where they start at high school. And then they have programs that help them get into, get the education they need to become a community service officer. And then there's other programs that the city helps with. I believe, I have to double check, but I think we also pay for part of the schooling to help them get ready to become police officers. We also, the fire department has a program that starts with E's there too. So that is something as far as admin, we talked about it in our last goal-setting session twofold. One, we are going to review our hiring practices for the city to make sure that we do not have bias, to work really hard to dig through it and see if we can do that too. And also set up a program, is there a type of program that people can come, young people can come and check off City Hall, see what it's like to work for the public? Those type of programs, I think, would really help attract candidates.
This is a touchy subject for sure, but, you know, I'm thinking about what Andy said about, you know, people not feeling heard when they come to meetings and so forth. And I, you know, I look around, I go to an event every year at Columbia Academy that honors academics in the school, and I turn around and look, and I see so many different colors of people there, speaking so many different languages. And, you know, one of my big pushes is to start having conversations with people, sitting down and seeing where they're at as far as community involvement, and what stops them from getting involved with the community. Because I certainly, I want to see leadership be more fairly represented and would like, you know, the city to take the direction of its residents.
So one thing that I want to mention first that came up when I was having a conversation with a neighbor the other day in the park, and I was talking about my campaign, and, you know, she said to me kind of cynically, you know, that everyone comes to her and their community when they're looking for a vote during the election, but then they don't hear from them again. And, you know, it's easy to fall into this trap. I've been in municipal government. It's easy to listen to the developers or the people who need something from the city, but I'm committed to going out to places where people are, because I know some of the reasons why people have not been engaged. I myself have been in that boat. It's, you know, people have kids and are on fixed incomes, and it's, it's hard to follow everything that's going on in the city. So coming to where people are at for one, I want to make sure that there are improvements in terms of who can access homeownership in our community. I think the city could be creative about looking into how we could, how we could support low and middle-income residents with a document on the home in our community, among other things. Thanks.
Well, in my tenure in business, we've seen a tremendous change in, in, except for people that come in our store, I mean, different personality, different nations. And the big thing I haven't really heard mentioned is our school district. As long as I've been a councilman, we were very close to the school, and schools are really, our high school, our grade schools are so important for our teaching and our teachers, it's so important, because they're part of the tax base in our city too. But the thing that's really helping our city, I think, is the houses, price of housing in Minneapolis. And they're flocking out of Minneapolis right now after what just happened. And they're, they're looking here for homes, because we put a home on Columbia Heights here and it sells within a day or two. They were about... it sells within a day or two, because we're buying one half-price what Minneapolis is right now.
A few years ago, when the Dragon House, the Chinese restaurant on Central Avenue closed, and I worked there as a waitress, kind of off and on for decades, it's turned into an Ethiopian restaurant, and I got to know the family that bought that restaurant. And their stories that they told of how they have gotten over here is just amazing. Channel 16 that we have here in Heights is a gem, and I would like to see some of these people interviewed, okay? And maybe a Business of the Month or something to highlight these businesses and these people, because they have amazing stories of what they have gone through to get here into Columbia Heights. I'd also like to talk to the police and our schools to find out who are some of the leaders in the local community, and ask them, hey, how can you help get your people involved? We want you here, we need your help, help us. I want to identify them. Thank you.
For me, it's a huge issue of inclusivity rather than exclusivity. We win when we decide to embrace the uncomfortable and have the conversations about systemic racism, sexism, fears, misconceptions, misunderstandings. Whether you're talking about a job applicant, whether you're talking about somebody who's going to run for council, they need to have the skillset to fulfill the responsibilities of that position that they are seeking. So I think the problem, or the question becomes not, why aren't we seeing those people if they don't have the skillset? You can't hire somebody if they don't apply. So what can we do to help them gain those skills that make them viable candidates for city employment or for an elected position?
Our police department, about around 2009 with the hiring, they don't get a lot of changes back then. They initiated, they believe in community policing philosophy, which is the undergird of everything that they do, it permeates all their tactics, all their programs. Their big goal is to develop strong relationships with everybody in the community, no matter who you are, where you're from, how old you are. And they've been working on that very hard for the last 11 years, and to see what happened in Minneapolis was very, very disturbing to our police officers, they were just very upset about it, and really want to work even harder in our community to get that. So that's one of the things I'm running on, is increasing our community police office, which, when you do community policing, it's very labor-intensive, it's expensive. There are lots of things that they're working on, so I would fully support more ideas, more things that they can do to strengthen our community police department than we can in the city.
I'll be the first to admit, I do not know the police department very well. But my wife works over at Secca, running the food shelf there, and she has a lot of interaction with them and has nothing but great things to say about them. From what I understand, the Columbia Heights Police Department is a beacon in the metro area, and, you know, a lot of police departments could do a lot of good learning from them. But I will say this, if it's important for me to find out what's going on with the Columbia Heights Police Department, and any opinions I might have on improvements, I will dig right in and work really hard.
Yeah, thank you. This is an issue that is really important to me. The murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis really shook me, but I also have connections to policing in my family. My grandfather was a lieutenant in the St. Paul Police Department. And echoing some of the things that have been said, I have been pretty impressed with my interactions and with what I've heard from my neighbors about the Columbia Heights Police Department and their officers. I was grateful to see the statement that Chief Lenny Austin put out after the situation in Minneapolis. But at the same time, I think there's certainly always more work to do. I think particularly in the realm of communication and training in best practices for communication as well as community policing, I think it's important, and I look forward to having more conversations with neighbors about their experiences.
Well, we've changed a lot. Our chief of police went to FBI school last year, and he learned a lot in three months, because out east. And, you know, I'm a firm believer in a strong police force, and when I say strong, I mean people that are trained well. And I think our police force is the best there is, because they are so busy. I read our green sheet every week, and you see the drugs in the city is terrible. We haven't talked about it, but no one's asked a question on it. But the police are busy every day, we got someone, even in our store, we had many kids come in, young people, they pass out from heroin, and what do the police do? They take them to the hospital, and we're paying for that, and it's happening in our city every day. As far as what we're doing, everything we can, I think the police are doing everything they can to be more trained, properly trained, and not using deadly force, for instance.
We have a really great police force, I love our chief right now, Lenny Austin, he's really out there and is concerned about these issues. I was really happy when I went into the Thai restaurant on 37th and Central a while ago, and I saw two of our officers having dinner there. And I thought, oh, that, you know, that's really nice that they frequent our places, and they're out there in the community. So it's good to see them, and not in official confrontational way, but in a friendly way. If I could say anything, maybe that they would just walk the beat more, just so that you see them out there a little bit more, and maybe even get a police dog, because it always makes people smile or care, you know, when they see a dog, they want to take care of it. But we do have a great police department, and let's, let us just grow on what it's already got.
I would give our police department a nine out of 10, and the reason they don't get a 10 is because we always have to have a little bit of room to set our goals and continue to achieve more and more and more. That's the only reason our police department will not get a 10. We're one of the earliest departments to utilize body cams and surveillance cameras on our buildings. When we did the facade improvement program, started that two years ago, I will be honest, I was against it, I thought it was a little too much Big Brother, but I quickly changed my mind when I found out how, within days, I think it was a day after the first camera went up, they were able to utilize that footage in arrest, tracking somebody down and arresting a perpetrator. So I'm in full support of that surveillance system. They use de-escalation policies, we've got a community outreach, our officers are boots on the pavement, and their face is present in the community continually. Their training is monthly, if not weekly, they work with the Carlson Group on mental health and limited issues. We've got an excellent police department, and we should be very proud of them.
I was at the protests, I went down and filled the backpack with first aid items and water, and went down and stiffed people and marshaled them and supported them and did my best to help their voices be heard. My wife works at the American Indian Center in Franklin, so I was down there helping them board it up when the riots started. This is really close to my heart. Now, with that said, the other thing I did was I sat down with Sergeant Justin Pletcher, we talked for about an hour about all this, and about how he felt. And I love that guy, he's got it figured out. And I love our de-escalation techniques that we use in Columbia Heights, I love the focus on non-lethal. I would like to see less law enforcement degrees and more social work degrees for our cops, and we can talk more. You know, whether you're talking about Columbia Heights or our entire globe, this is a problem that's been around, at least in this country, for over 400 years. And the expectation that we're going to fix it with one or two clear statements, if anybody had that key, they wouldn't be sitting here right now. You know, I think we were all very sad about what happened and what that reflection on us as a society and a culture was. I'm going to have to move on at this point, I apologize.
So, addressing institutional racism and a legacy of white supremacy that is deeply rooted in all of our institutions in Columbia Heights and throughout the state of Minnesota is critically important. One of the things that I love most about our community is the diversity that I see all around me, in terms of race, class, gender, differences in ability, and that's really important. But I want to make sure that it's not just represented in the people that live here, that are on our, that are on our streets, but also represented in city leadership, on city staff. And I think, you know, it will be important, and it would be a priority of mine if elected, to do some deep planning around diversity and inclusion at all levels, you know, not only policing, but like I said, in our city enterprise, also in the school system, and working closely with the school board will be important.
Well, I've been in business for many, many years, I don't see any issue with race at all, and I treat everyone as humans. And I think our people, we teach that, and we have lots of different nationalities, different personalities. Some of my best friends are people of color. I've traveled to foreign countries, I've traveled to Africa, I've been in Jamaica, I've had friends in my home, here, not Columbia Heights, but at my place in Bloomington before I moved here, 30 years, 20 years ago. And I don't, I don't have any discrimination to anyone, I just, people are people, and we're all, we're all human, some are different than others, but we most love our neighbors ourselves. And the person that lives next to me, hey, up there in 41st and Cleveland, we have lots of people of color. And I, we blow our horn, we wave at each other every day, no trouble at all. I don't believe in that, I don't have any, in my body, I don't have any racism.
We, like me, I grew up here in Columbia Heights, it was always white. So, but I was, I was raised well, a few weeks ago, I did attend down in Houston Park, the seminar, or whatever you, the open thing when the heavens burst open about racism, and it was very, very sad for me to hear about our students being called N-word and the abuse that they've had to put up with from their peers right here in Columbia Heights. It starts with each other, it starts in the home. We have to start at the beginning, at home. We need to talk with one another, and we need to realize it. And I, I would say, like, I'm like Bobby, I treat everybody the same, too, but yet, as I learn more, I do realize that, yes, I'm a part of the problem, I've heard the arguments for reparations, and I agree, okay?
I see it as part of the community vision, and if you look at the way community is defined, it's a unified body of individuals sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. The business part of the community vision is easy, that's established on data, but you cannot legislate emotions and you cannot legislate ethics. That comes from within us, and it's a very changeable piece. The teachable moments are the opportunities that we create, change with. We need to consistently, not selectively, strive for that, and when we do that, we'll strengthen Columbia Heights, and we'll thrive as a community with a more pure vision. I was not raised with prejudice, I was very fortunate when you consider my parents' generation, but it's something that I strive to better myself with every day.
Couple weeks ago, I attended a gathering over in the park over here, where it was designed for white residents to sit quietly and listen to the voices of people of color in town telling us what they've experienced, and they were hard things to hear, they were hard judgments on us, they were things that were very uncomfortable for us to hear, but they were vitally important for us. It's vitally important for us to sit with that discomfort, to realize that we are, as white people, privileged by merely existing, we have privilege. And we need to sit with that, and when people of color tell us, when they want to tell us what's happening, we need to sit down, we need to shut up, and we need to listen.
One, I do believe institutional racism does exist, it's very powerful, it's been within our system for many, many decades, centuries. I became aware of it more in my 20s, I grew up in a private county, which is predominantly white, but then I moved to Minneapolis, and then I moved to Seattle, and through that, I was constantly challenged by my friends. I've seen it firsthand with my friends up close who are people of color, happening to them, and I was amazed and shocked, and they also challenged me, so it's been a constant growing experience for me, and I'm always working on treating people with respect, and if I, if somebody points something out to me, I need to work to change it. So like Julian has, first to start with ourselves, as a councilperson, to keep an eye out for things, and if you see things that are racist, unfair, against people of color, to call it out and keep working on it. As a community, I would hope that we all work on it together and help each other become stronger, because as humans, we have this brain thing, you know, we should be able to think things through things in how we treat other people, so.
Yeah, this has been a tough year for our community on multiple levels, you know, with two pandemics on our hands in our communities, both COVID-19 and the racial injustice that our communities face. So I think, you know, for this question, it's really important, and if elected, I would yield to partners in government at the state and federal level, the CDC, and also the Minnesota Department of Health, for information about what we, as a city, should be doing to best move forward, to ensure the public health of all of our communities. The thing that I wouldn't want to see happen is that we reopen everywhere in Heights, and then we, you know, become the center of an additional spike, especially one that is likely to hit our communities of color and lower-income communities the most. So, yeah, that's all I'll say on that.
Well, I'm, I've been through a life longer than some of you, and I've seen a lot of viruses, and my brother had polio, for instance, and they stopped it. And I'm not afraid, we have been very fortunate in our company, because we have between 300 and 400 employees, and we deal with hundreds of thousands of people in a month's time. And to my knowledge, we've had no one that's been infected by it. However, most of, most of the people I'm finding out are passing, and a lot of my acquaintances or acquaintance of mine, of someone else that I knew, are older folks that were nursing homes, that's where most of the deaths are coming. And it's, to me, it's, we're a free country, we, Americans as a rule are free, and now we're not really free anymore, we're, well, we have to wear masks, we have to wear, we got to wash our hands, which is good, good hygiene is always good. But we don't talk about cigarettes and alcohol, what it does to people's bodies, and I'll tell you something, it's kept causing more deaths probably than anything else right now.
I'd like to thank one of our residents, Mary Granland, who has on Facebook today how Columbia Heights is its own little hotspot for this coronavirus. We have to wear our masks, it's a pain in the butt, but we have to do it, and I would not mind if our city council mandated it throughout the whole city, as Edina has done partially. This disease, I've been reading more about it, the current issue of time is dedicated to it, it's racist because it affects people of lower-income more, and it is also bad for our environment. It's a horrible thing, and all I can do is hope that we will rise from it smarter and stronger, and I would just like to tell everybody to please wear your masks. I don't, I hate to see businesses close down because that's a problem in itself, but if it's going to come to that, we'll do it, it's wear your masks and wash your hands.
I think it's essential that we follow the CDC and the WHO and rely on the state guidelines, meant of the Minnesota Health as well as federal guidelines. But I see this pandemic is having two pieces to it, two major pieces, one is the health aspect, the other one is... The other one is the financial or business aspect. And I think we need to look at those, not as one piece, but we need to look at those separately in how we address them and how we move forward. I am a firm believer that we're not nearly as far into this process as what we would want ourselves to be, or that we believe we are. I think this is going to be, I think it's going to take us all into 2021. And how that's going to look, whether it's still going to be partial closures or reclosures, I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball. But I think it's imperative that we all be diligent and respectful of how we move about the community in order to ensure both of those pieces.
I'm sorry, but anyone complaining about freedoms being taken away by this, I'm sorry. But when 9/11 happened, we passed the Patriot Act, which put all kinds of limits on our freedoms. I didn't hear anyone complaining about that. A few people, but most people, they take off their shoes at the airport, they let everything get scanned, they go for the searches. Anyway, we need to wear masks. We all need to wear masks. Study after study after study after study is showing that if you wear your mask, you don't spread it. I could have it. I could have COVID right now with no symptoms. And right now, I could be giving it to all of you. If I wear my mask, you're not going to get it. Or the chances are much, much lower. You wear your mask for other people, not for yourself. It's the most unselfish thing you can do, is wear your mask. And if we can't get people to do it on their own, sorry, we're going to have to make on it.
I agree with a lot of things Andy said, Julian said, wear a mask. And this is a virus. It's a virus, folks. This virus is causing the Sweden without a shutdown, because they thought they could get through it and their businesses would survive. Guess what? The virus shut down their businesses. They are still, they are in a recession, just like their country is surrounding them. They thought they could prevent themselves from going into recession if they didn't shut down. Well, the virus took care of that. The virus is causing all this. This is something, a scary virus. There are a lot of health issues that are running. People who even recover from this, it takes months to recover from. It is not the flu. It's really important. And this can last one, two, three years until we return immunity or we get the vaccine. This is going to be our lifestyle for us, to wear a mask. They thought Japan would do really, just like New York. They didn't. You know why? There are mask cultures since the 60s or beyond, or before. They didn't get hit as hard because they wore a mask. Please wear a mask, people.
Well, I want to prepare you to hear a repeating theme. You know, this is really hard. We have divided messaging that has quickly trickled down to local cities. We need more unified messaging and just across the whole infrastructure, we need more support for each other. I definitely support a mask law in Columbia Heights. I would say anytime you're out in public, you need to have the thing on. You know, I was down in Minneapolis last week, went in for shopping. It's not a big deal. Just put it on and wear it. To your guys' point, you're protecting other people, you know. I'm sure at some point, you know, first stop sign was controversial. But we got used to it, right? To Andy's point, you know, you put on, you take your shoes off at the airport, we all got used to it. This is something we can get used to. And it's protecting the people around us and those who we love. If you're worried about business taking a hit, I ordered from Miller's Bar the other week, and they were out of food at 6 o'clock. So I think they're doing fine.
Well, I'd like to see us, as a city, try to get, within the next three or four years, become an all-American city again, as we were in 1995. And that's what takes a tremendous coordination of peace, or a city of peace, that goes back three or four years ago. And we got to show that. And we got to work with the schools, the police, and everyone together. We all are different human beings. We all have different idiosyncrasies. We all have different ideas, but we're supposed to love one another and share with one another. And all I can say is that I believe in that with all my heart. And I pray for our city. I pray daily. And I have friends that pray. We have a Bible study every week at our store on Thursday morning. And different people come. And I'm glad for that. Last week, we were studying the book of Elizabeth, Queen Esther, how she saved all her people by being, you got to raise her. Thank you.
Yes, as I sit here listening to my other candidates, I've been looking out the window. It is a beautiful view out the window, the tops of the trees out there. I watched a bird, a big bird. It looked, it was soaring, could have been an eagle. And I just thought, what an amazing place Columbia Heights is. And I think of all the individuals that make up this town. And if we can just pull all that energy together, just think of the great things that we can accomplish. And I believe that we can. It starts with each one of us alone. We can just be a little oasis. And we will do it. I believe in this town. Thank you. That's all I can say. I believe in us and Columbia Heights.
I want to thank everyone for listening in this evening, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. The important piece to remember is that this isn't a personality race. It's not a party race. It's not about global issues or personal agendas. It's about Columbia Heights. It's about the residents' backyard, your community. It's about electing a person with the best skill set to accomplish what is best for the community at large, and that community is you, the taxpayers. My presence at council chambers brought me to the candidacy. My candidacy did not bring me to council chambers. No one has done speaking for me. I'm a viable candidate because I have consistently and long-term been dedicated. I've been engaged, and I have been present. I believe the best choice on August 11th is me. A vote for Katie Jacobs is a vote for your voice back in council chambers. Thank you all.
Let me start with this. I am a straight white male in America. I have privilege, a lot of it. To deny this would deny any understanding of how things can improve. A year ago at this time, the LGBTQ community was denied the acknowledgement of just one day of recognition by proclamation by the current mayor, by way of writing a policy that beforehand had not existed. As a committed ally, I could not let this be the end of it. I joined with other community members to write since proclamation to be read and signed and cried. This also planted the seeds of my eventual candidacy. I'm running to make sure voices are heard and listened to. I am running to establish a safer and more accessible city government. We're all people, LGBTQ, people of color, of all faiths, young, old, lifelong residents, new families, people with disabilities. Everyone can feel like they have equity, that they have a seat at the table, and they have a voice of their own, and that we are listening.
Hi. I want to thank First State the City and the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together again. I want to thank everyone that's out there watching. Thank you for listening. I want to continue serving all the residents in our city. I am asking for your vote, so I can continue working to improve the quality of life that we have in the city. There's more work to be done. We just started. And I would love to have your support. Thank you for listening.
Look, we're all here because we care about Columbia Heights. We love this place. We want to see our community grow and prosper. And we want individuals and families alike to see what we all see in Columbia Heights. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I have all the answers on how to guide our city. But I will tell you, the reason why you have multiple council members is so that each one of them can bring their expertise to the table and collectively come up with creative solutions. I will also tell you that if I'm elected, I will put my heart, soul, and passion into this position. And it's not beneath me to keep on learning all the way through my life. In closing, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters ABC, the City of Columbia Heights, and most importantly, the voters for giving all of us this time. My name is Scott Skaya, and I would appreciate your role.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and to the City of Columbia Heights for making this possible, and for all of you at home watching on Facebook livestream for listening and learning about us before the August 11th primary. I believe that I'm the strongest candidate for Columbia Heights City Council because I have a strong track record during my career as a community organizer, working on social, economic, and environmental justice at multiple levels of government. I also have relationships at multiple levels of government, because as much as I will be very laser-focused on what this local community needs, I think it's important to have those relationships with the county, state, and federal levels of government. I also, throughout my time talking with the community and in our time talking tonight, I have seen that one of the biggest issues that has come up is the conversation around structural racism. And I just wanted to say, based on some of the conversation that my fellow candidates have had, it is a priority of mine. There's a difference between structural and interpersonal racism. And they're both important for the city council to address, and we have a responsibility to do so. Please check out my website, dorleyforheights.org, D-O-R-L-E. And feel free to give me a call at any time, too. My contact information is on the website. Thanks.
Thank you. And that concludes the candidate presentation. We just have a quick wrap-up here from the League of Women Voters. I want to thank the candidates for you to speak to the voters about the issues and absolutely for running for office. It takes a lot to be a candidate for office these days. The residents of Columbia Heights can find election information and voting information on the city website. Also, check the Secretary of State website. It's easy to remember. It's mnvotes.org. That's M-N-V-O-T-E-S dot org. I wanted to mention that the League of Women Voters ABC will be hosting a separate general election, Meet the Candidates Forum, after we get through the primary here, for the two city council seats in Columbia Heights, and then also for the mayor's seat. And that forum will happen on September 29th. And again, we'll have some questions submitted ahead of time, so watch for more details. I do want to thank the City of Columbia Heights and them doing this on Facebook, the YouTube channel, and also the League of Women Voters ABC website. And for now, early voting has started, and you can request an absentee ballot or go to City Hall and vote anytime up until the primary on August 11th. If you need to register to vote, you can do that online or when you go to early voting. So make your voice heard. Vote in the primary election on August 11th. Thank you, and stay healthy and well. Thank you.